Okay. Look at that, magic. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're calling the meeting to order. Very happy you're here. And we'll get on with the tonight's meeting with asking for the closed session report.
Mayor, there are no items to report out.
Okay, I would like to ask the deputy chief of our police department to lead us in the pledge. Excuse me, I was corrected, Assistant Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Nope. And that was Assistant Chief Steve Shortz. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Luvenos?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Litzter?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
Okay, any items for agenda review or to add to it?
Ms. Mayor, yes, there's one supplemental on item 3A1. We had one youth council alternate nominee remove her name from consideration.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Motion and second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, presentation of certificates of appreciation to outgoing youth council members. And Kristin Tignak is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. This evening, we are recognizing 13 outgoing youth council members. These individuals have contributed their time and exemplary service on the advisory board to the city council on youth-related matters. I'm excited to announce that our graduating seniors have plans to attend the following colleges this fall. Moore Park College, UC Berkeley, UCLA, UC Santa Cruz, UC Riverside, and USC. The rest will be continuing on at their middle and high schools, poised to be remarkable student leaders this coming year. I re-- okay. At this time, none of our outgoing members are here, are present tonight. A lot of them are on vacation, so I'll be reading their names. Sumaya Akbar, Mateos Broke, Joshua Chandran, Minkson Deng, Jordan Downey, Gracie Kim, Raul Naveen, Aniri Palai, Kalissa Rowe, Sadie Rowe, Rohuth Sajju, Jaslin Sidhu, and Aldinta. To all of these amazing individuals watching at home or on vacation, I wish you the very best and want to let you know that it has been a true honor to work with each and every one of you.
All right. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Um, Mayor?
You just told me about that.
No, no problem. Mayor, members of the city council, I want to remind everyone that the Brown Act is intended to provide public access to governmental meetings. Thus, the city of Simi Valley must provide notice of its meetings, post-agendas, and provide general descriptions of specific items to be discussed. And so as part of this process, the city has identified within tonight's agenda an opportunity for members of the public to make statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports, specifically item number two. This means that members of the public under this item can only speak on those items. Tonight, by way of example, there are a few items under appointments. They are related to appointment of youth council and appointment of youth employment service advisory board members. Therefore, public statements under item number two should only relate to those topics and not any other topics by way of comparison. For those members of the public wishing to make public statements on all items other than appointments, special presentations, and informational reports, such opportunities also exist on tonight's agenda under items number four and six, which may be combined. Under the Brown Act, such items provide the public with an opportunity to participate and voice their concerns on all other items related or unrelated to tonight's meeting. Out of respect to the city council and your fellow members of the public, it is requested that you adhere to the Brown Act and follow this council's agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item two, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for item two.
Okay, move on.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3A1, appointment of youth council members, and Kristin Tignak is presenting this item as well.
Thank you. Good evening again. The Simi Valley Youth Council was established in 1970 as an advisory board to the city council on issues of concern to local youth, and consists of 21 members and up to three alternates in grades seventh through 12th. Youth council members' terms of office will expire on June 30th. A recruitment to fill the 24 youth council position was-- position, sorry-- was opened on March 10th, 2022, and concluded April 27th. A total of 52 applications were received. Interview panels met on June 16th, 28th, and 29th to interview the applicants. The interview panels nominated 21 applicants for youth council membership, along with three alternates. The following youth council applicants have been nominated for appointment. As I call your name, please come forward. Representing Apollo High School, Victoria Schumacher. Representing Royal High School, Ellen McCrossan and Yi Hong Wang. Representing Santa Susanna High School, Abhishek Jagannathan and Isaac Tu. Representing Simi Valley High School, Rashi Kandara and Ashlyn Rowe. Representing Hillside Middle School, Christopher Krikorian. Representing Sedolowa Middle School, Yedda Rose. Representing Valley View Middle School, Abigail Potter. Representing the community at large, Serena Geetly, Jasleen Kangara, Amanda Kilnick, Krish Kotia, Nandia Krishnamoorthy. Sorry. Adve Nayer. I got your eyes all mixed up. Okay. Ian Nelson, Annika Nanduri, Jacob Peter Salvanera, Zihong Situ, and Reka Tignak. And his alternates, Chloe Drury, Mayam Island, and Ryland Downey. It is recommended that the city council authorize and the mayor appoint the 24 applicants nominated to serve one-year terms on the Simi Valley Youth Council commending-- sorry, commencing on July 26th and concluding on June 30th, 2023. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
Motion? Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to nominate all of these applicants up here to the youth council and have you appoint.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
And for the record-- And for the record, I appoint each of you, and welcome aboard. Thank you. Okay, we have pins, and I'm gonna be in such big trouble if we don't get those pins out. And now, these are-- these are high-class collector items. You're not to sell the pin when you go out. You keep that pin.
Yeah, that's true. I see him driving, I'm like-- The one girl, fourth one down. Oh, I already said that, she was one of my girls.
And while the mayor is passing those out, I just have to want to take this moment to say congratulations to all of you, that we are so excited that you're willing to serve, that you are here on a Monday evening looking so amazing and representing. And if I heard what Kristin was just saying, is it tomorrow that they officially begin their day of service, or they begin their role? So, none of this summertime off, you are put back to work.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3A2, appointment of youth employment service advisory board members, and Kristin Tignak will present this item as well.
All right, good evening again. Since 1982, the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board has advised the city council on matters related to youth employment. The board is comprised of 18 members. A total of 12 positions are currently vacant, four regular, five designated, and three alternate member positions. On July 12th, the YES Advisory Board Interview Subcommittee interviewed the eligible applicants and nominated five for appointment. Additionally, the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, the neighborhood councils, and the Simi Valley Unified School District nominated representatives for there for three vacant positions on the YES Advisory Board. If appointed, the applicants will serve terms commencing on July 26th, concluding on June 30th of 2024, with the exception of the neighborhood council's representative completing a partial term scheduled to conclude on June 30th, 2023. The following individual is here this evening, and then I will read the rest of the names as well, so if you'd please come forward. We have at-large Representative Melani McNabb Robinson, the Director of Operations from the Simi Valley Boys and Girls Club of Moore-- oh, sorry, Moore Park, I messed that up. Director of Operations at Simi Valley, and she's from Boys and Girls Club of Moore Park and Simi Valley. Local Business Representative Mark Netka, CEO of STS Education. Neighborhood Council Representative Bobby Calderon, Neighborhood Council District Four. Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce Representative John Tolson, Director of Membership and Business Development. Simi Valley Unified School District Representative Rita Longo, work-experienced teacher at Royal High School. Alternate members Ryan Fowler, Community Member and Student Leadership Program Coordinator with the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute. Eric Verway, Community Member and Fire Captain with Los Angeles City Fire Department. And Amin Magzoudi, Executive Director, Partnership Development, from Pacific Oaks College. The Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, Neighborhood Councils, and the Simi Valley Unified School District recommend that the city council approve and the mayor appoint applicants nominated to the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board. This concludes staff's report, and I'm able to answer any questions at this time.
I think we need to have a speech by John-- John Tolson's up there, he ought to give us a speech.
Mayor, I don't have a question, but may I make a motion?
Yes, you may, sure.
I move to approve and the mayor appoint the eight applicants nominated to the YES Advisory Board.
Second?
Okay, motion second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
But there's more I haven't appointed as of yet. No, of course, we're appointing. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no public hearings under agenda item five this evening. Agenda items four and six are combined this evening, and the council will hear all public statements under this agenda item four. Agenda item number four and agenda item number six are timed saluted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak on for this public statements item four for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
No comments, ready for the first speaker.
Thank you. Mary Ann Burton?
I'm very offended with the way the water is being distributed in Simi Valley. Residents get 7%. 7% of available water. 93%, 93% goes to other entities. Residents get 7% and they're being squeezed. Our landscaping, when I moved into this town 12 years ago, I landscaped my yard, and then I was told there was a drought, so I re-landscaped my yard to be drought tolerant. Now I'm finding I have to cut my water to once a week, and I'm going to-- I'm in danger of losing my landscape, and I only get 7% of the available water? No, not even, because I'm being squeezed out of that for the 93% that goes to municipalities, businesses, and agriculture. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Doug Bamforth?
Is that a word? Yes.
Good evening. Turn this over here. Boy, it was great seeing all those young children here. You know, I would, if I could get enough of them, I would replace the entire United States government, the House of Representatives, the Senate, and the President on down. Anyway. I wanted to talk, instead of water, I'm gonna talk a little bit about how I feel about the country. You know, we've done great things. Teddy Roosevelt made our national parks. Dwight Eisenhower made our highway system, national highway system. John F. Kennedy had a vision, and we did it, putting a man on the moon. And I want you to think about how it is now, to how it was then. Where's my glasses? Oh, sorry. Time's running by here. But yet, with all of the problems, no other country has as many people trying to get into it as this one. There must be something in the very basic foundation of being a constitutional republic that draws people here. Today, I'm alarmed by all the fighting that goes on, and it seems to be getting worse and worse, whether it be in Tondras or anywhere. People are, you can even see members of Tondras disrespecting the law of the land. You see the governor doing it. Courtesy has disappeared. We're falling apart from within. I think we need to quit thinking of ourselves, and think of us as a community who should make everything for everyone much better than what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lapper?
My fan club chirps. Mayor Mashburn and city council, let me first cite the City of Simi Valley Code of Ethics for Elected Officials. Item five, conduct of public meetings. Members shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments, not germane to the business of the body, or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Which brings me to city council meeting of June 27th, where Councilman Mike Judge took advantage of his time to partake in a rebuttal to my rightful public comment. And I quote, "To address Mr. Lapper's comments, the reason I don't address your comments, most of what you say is lies, and it doesn't affect my community." Mr. Judge, my comments about our community, illegal fireworks, streets needing repair, housing, water safety, or traffic concerns are not lies. Also, you missed my point about you not being responsive at the city council meetings, as it was about you seldom speaking about anything, and 95-- 90% of your time is spent staring at your computer monitor. And then Mayor Mashburn said, "Mr. Lapper, I agree with Judge. I'm glad you're here. I wish you'd speak the truth." Mayor Mashburn and Mike Judge, I always speak the truth and present facts, and calling a resident who participates regularly in the city happenings a liar without any support is very disrespectful from our elected leaders. Mayor Mashburn is wrongly obsessed with the idea that I call him a liar. That has never happened, and the public record will support that fallacy of yours, going back to the failed censure attempt of Councilman Lou Evinos. It would be wonderful to have a meaningful dialogue with our elected leaders, but some have chosen to ignore public statements, emails, and this council offers no town halls or social media communications. Furthermore, I'll remind you, the City Council of Thousand Oaks City has a term limit of three terms or twelve years. Mike Judge has been on the council for twelve long years and is seeking four more for a total of sixteen years. That is four more years of a councilman who has brought disgrace to our city on more than one occasion. A councilman who I doubt understands the approval tonight of the monthly investment report, a report showing a June loss of $1.7 million with corporate bonds. A councilman who has ignored the Santa Susana Field Lab non-clean-up for his twelve-year tenure. The airing of In the Dark of the Valley last night about contamination in our valley from Rockodyne Boeing is truly alarming. Time for change in Simi Valley. I'll now await for your responses under Item Four A with your bully pulpit. I'm sure Mr. Litzler can relate. Do better, the youth council is watching. Thank you."
Thank you.
Bruce Boyer.
Good evening, Bruce Boyer, I'm from Chatsworth Lake Manor. Yes, it is Ventura County. I have people that tell me I don't live in Ventura County. Why do I write checks to Mr. Hens? I don't know, our treasurer. So, happy summer, everybody. You know, when I'm forced to agree with John Lapper, something's upside down. I think that you should have town halls. There are important things that need to be discussed and debated, and the citizens need to know where the council members stand. Speak up. I've been calling for these all year. One of the things that needs to be discussed in a town hall is our Second Amendment. The Supreme Court finally affirmed it is our right to keep and bear arms in public. The Bruin decision. Why? To protect ourselves and others. So earlier this summer, a lunatic went to shoot up a supermarket in Buffalo. A lot of people got killed because there was nobody there to stop him. So, another lunatic went to go shoot up a shopping mall in Indiana. Eight out of ten shots fired hit him, killed him, by a twenty-two-year-old young man at a range of forty yards. I think our firearms instructor on the panel would say that is excellent shooting. He saved countless lives. Because as I pointed out to the city council, Indiana is constitutional carry. They recognize our right to keep and bear arms in public without the Supreme Court ordering them to. Well, now the Supreme Court has ordered government to do it. So what happens if there's a lunatic here? Well, I'd like to think law enforcement would be there, but we saw what happened in Uvalde. No disrespect to Simi Valley P D, but a lot of people got killed because they stood in the hallway. We saw what happened at the borderline. Were there eight cops inside when shots were fired, or ten? It depends upon which cop you're listening to. How many people got killed there? All the cops were safe because they got out of there, they left people behind. We, the citizens, need to protect ourselves. So how about a public forum, so that you can explain why you're not allowing people our rights? L A P D and L A sheriffs and the Highway Patrol have already said they're not going to enforce or investigate alleged high-capacity, standard-capacity magazines. Assault rifle bans are struck down. Are you telling the people of Simi Valley to go sit in the back of the bus? That you don't care what the Supreme Court says? It's our right? How about we start with recognizing the rights of the people in Simi Valley, oh, I don't know, in Simi Valley, instead of waiting for somebody else to do it? These are our rights, our rights as citizens. You want to deny them? Have a public forum. Let's have a debate. Bring it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. That was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item Four A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Yeah. Okay, we'll start with Mike Judge.
I have no comments.
Okay. Councilman Calvin.
Only the fact that we, as a city, do not issue concealed carry weapons, that's done by the sheriff of Ventura County.
Okay, Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to address the fact that you equivocated, you mentioned specifically, Mr. Boyer, telling people in Simi Valley to go sit in the back of the bus. You do not get to equivocate civil rights that people of color fought and died for with gun rights. That is not an equivocal comparison, that's disrespectful to the many men and women of color who fought for civil rights, who fought for equality, and who died for simple, basic rights, like the right to vote and the right to exist. So it's not the same, it's not, it's my turn to talk, Mr. Boyer. And therefore you will respect me.
I'm not speaking here.
Good. As far as our mayor and councilman judge calling a resident a liar, I agree, that is disrespectful. That is part of what Mr. Banforth talked about, disrespecting the law of the land, there is no common courtesy. We can disagree with someone without being personally vindictive and attacking them, and we need to come back to that. So thank you, Mr. Banforth, for bringing that up. In terms of water, let me remind you that the number-one economic, you know, engine in this state of California is, in fact, agriculture. And so we all have to make sacrifices. I personally voted for us not to continue allowing new pools, so that we could water for, you know, outside, but that was not a decision that I had the votes to carry. So I just want to bring that up. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mary, Mayor. I'd like to thank those who spoke today, this evening, I appreciate it. I appreciate Ms. Mary Ann Burton coming and expressing her concerns about water. I know it is very disheartening to see so much drying up and shriveling, and I know it's a concern of everyone. The shortage, this water shortage is real, and it's affecting everyone. And as far as the statistic of seven percent being residential, and I don't know that statistic, I'll do more investigation, but I certainly do know that everyone is having to sacrifice, and it's been, we made the decision which affects certainly the water that we, that Division Eight or Section Eight of, how, Water Works District Eight, I've got to get the rights, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, we don't have any purview over Golden State Water, and that's another third of our city, and so they too, in some ways, are even more draconian in what they're requiring for water. And so, but appreciate your courage in coming forward and speaking. And I also want to thank Mr. Banforth about his reminding of this beautiful, wonderful country that we live in, and what great has happened and what great will happen in the future, and it is important that we have civil discourse, and I see much of it happening here on the dais, and hope that it will continue. So thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann, we hear you loud and clear. It doesn't mean we can cure the problem quickly, but your concern is heard from many residents, and if there's anything we can do about it, we certainly will. But I can't guarantee anything can be done, but we do hear what you have to say. Doug, thanks so much for bringing a little bit of civility and education to us all without really attacking anybody. You're a gentleman, and I appreciate your input. Bruce, the one area that I, I just want to say how I handle it, is I know several people that have recently received their C C W permits, and none of them were denied or delayed anything. They got them quite quickly, and I know I, for one, on this council, would be more than happy to tell anybody that wants one how to go about getting it, and it's a pretty smooth process now. And it's just a process that we agree with, is going to the one source and saving the money of not having to put on a staff here. So, we may not fully agree, but I think the reality is, if you want a C C W and you live in Simi Valley, it's quite attainable. And thanks for your comments. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item Seven, Consent Calendar, and there are four resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent Item Six, Resolution Number 2022-42, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving the City of Simi Valley's Title VI program. Consent Item Seven, Resolution Number 2022-43, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley confirming the existence of a local emergency and authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Simi Valley pursuant to Brown Act provisions. Consent Item Eight, Resolution Number 2022-44, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving updated citywide publicly-available pace schedules effective on June 20, 2022, and on July 4, 2022, in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. And Consent Item Nine, Resolution Number 2022-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley accepting all of Volume One and the Simi Valley Annex of Volume Two within the Ventura County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022.
Okay, we'll go ahead with Mayor Protim Litzler.
Actually, that was left open from last time, but since, but since I, I would actually just have a couple of questions on number two, please.
Number two. Okay, Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Mayor, I'd like to poll Consent Items Three, Five, and Six, I just have a couple of questions.
Three, Five, Six. Okay, why don't we just go right in order, and we'll start with number two, questions on number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, it was a question about understanding, I know that needs, there's not a question about wanting to approve the funds and getting this done, and my question, and I didn't find in the report, was that part of the reason for the additional paving cost was that the existing subgrade was found to be wet. And I, is there an underground water issue there? I was just curious about what, what is, what was meant by that comment.
If I, I mean.
Although Ron's halfway down.
Yeah, he's sort of halfway down. Well, if I'm wrong, stay there. I believe the problem is that once the asphalt was removed, the quality of the base that was intended to be reused was not as good, and the saturation of the soil underneath doesn't create for the viable surface for the new asphalt to be applied to. So there's an extra cost involved in to remove that material. Am I close? There you go.
Is it a high-water table there as well? Is that why?
No, it just, it's just the quality of the base that was underneath it, and, well, he's at the, take it away.
This is not a high-water, groundwater area that I'm aware of, but, you know, there is a lot of irrigation with recycled water at the, at the plant, and sometimes water that's draining from the asphalt and everything just gets, finds a little crack in the asphalt and just soaks down and eventually builds up, and so the ground underneath gets soggy and therefore not compactable. So we do have to replace it and dig it out, so.
Got it. Well, I, no way am I opposed to this, I think it's very reasonable, I'm glad we're getting it done. What's the timetable to get this completed?
I don't know the exact timetable, but I think we're getting close to completion, and this, this amendment will wrap it up.
Yeah, it's already under construction, so it's, it's a matter of just finishing the job.
May I?
Yeah, please.
To clarify, is this the same company that earlier, I think, last meeting?
It is not.
It is not?
No.
No, it's not that one.
Really? But I have to ask, you do have heavy equipment that go through there.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if I was contracting with someone, I would expect them, along with myself, to do a very thorough inspection and come up with what their needs are.
Yes, and our staff does that, too. They, they look at the, the type of traffic, you know, heavy trucks and things like that, and that will help design how thick the base is and how thick the asphalt we put down is.
And you're satisfied with whoever this company is?
So far, so good, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And just one quick question, has this stopped moving back into the facility, or?
Oh, no, we're back in.
You're back in? I just, I thought, I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, yes.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Okay, item number three.
Yes, I, I saw that there was a bid put out, an R O F O, and that there were four responses, but I didn't know if, I'm assuming this is subject to the competitive bid process, and I didn't see if the other bids were lower. It just simply states on page two of the report that Telecom was ranked as the most qualified proposer, and that their cost proposal was reasonable, but I couldn't find anywhere in the report what the proposals were for the other bids.
So, these are professional services which are not, are not awarded on a cost basis, they're awarded on professional services that are provided, quality of the, of the, of the bid, quality of the person that is, would be, or the firm that would be doing the work, their understanding of the law, and any other basis. So we, we evaluate the bid itself, and then we select our most qualified candidate. From that point, then we negotiate what the cost would be. And that's what state law requires us to do, is we, you should not be allocating a professional services contract based upon cost alone.
So were, were the other bid prices taken into account? I mean, I know that there's all the components here, the demonstrated knowledge, the general quality of the proposal, the related experience and references, and the proposed approach, but do you use the other bids to negotiate the price down?
We would, yes.
Okay, yeah, it's just the first time I, I don't see what the other bids were, so then I don't know, you know, I'm used to seeing that in the reports.
Correct, but because this is a professional services contract, you would not see that in the report, because it's the, the basis of the bid, the cost in the bid is not the basis for the awarding of the contract, as opposed to a construction contract where it's the lowest responsible bidder. You have to take the lowest, you have to take the lowest bidder unless there's an overwhelming reason why not.
Okay, so this is not subject to competitive bidding?
It, it was competitive bid, it was, it was competitive proposals. There's a little bit of a difference, it wasn't a bid, it was a proposal. So the proposals were evaluated against each other. The best proposer was then invited to negotiate a contract at a, at a negotiated amount. And the amount that we are recommending for the contract was negotiated.
Okay, and within the, yeah, I just would have liked to have seen a range, at least, like if not just individual bids, but, you know, is this within the range?
We can provide them in the future, sure.
That would, that would be nice.
Yep.
Okay, number five.
Four, five. Yeah, sorry.
Be quiet.
Yeah, I, I just had a question, because there are a lot of numbers thrown in here, one hundred forty-eight thousand, and then we had the two hundred thirty-two thousand. So on page eight, Exhibit B, that is the, the total cost with the, with the Fourth Amendment? Two hundred thirty-two thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, what, that's with the amendment that we would be approving tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And the one hundred forty-eight thousand was the original cost?
Yes, yes, and we ran into, in, in dealing with the expanding scope of the contract, the original contract based upon what H, Housing Community, State of California Housing Community Development was looking for, in responding to their, their questions and other areas that we knew that H C D was looking for in housing elements that had not been addressed, the, the scope of the work had, had expanded.
So I'm assuming the, the forty-three thousand additional, and then the fifteen thousand additional, right?
Yes.
Is included in that two hundred thirty-two thousand?
That's correct. Two hundred thirty-two thousand is what the contract is worth now.
And will this contract be, because I'm assuming the reason why the cost keeps going up is because California law keeps changing, and that's why you need to update it, is that correct?
Well, I think, I think H C D is, as they review the four hundred-plus housing elements that are coming from municipalities, they have a certain amount of, quite honestly, I think, standard questions that they ask, and standard information that they look for. And as they, as they look through each individual city's housing element and county's housing element, they will look for, they may expand, they may want us to expand the scope of an answer that we provided, or a certain element that we have provided. So it really is, we're at the mercy of H C D's reviewer, and what they're, what they see as an acceptable housing element at the end of the day.
And so when we have to revise, we pay on an hourly rate, and that's what this additional cost is. Is that correct?
Yes.
But if I, if I could, just to confirm with a follow-up question. But if I, if I could, just to confirm with a follow-up question, this additional 25,000 is coming from LEAP, from grant?
It's coming from grant funds.
So it's coming from grant funds, the local early action planning, so those funds are, in essence, don't come directly from our coffers.
Uh, it's a state grant, so the state grant is paying for a state project, essentially.
That's, that's what I just want to make sure is out there as well in this discussion. And if I read it also correctly, this extends the contract until December 31 of 2023, so it's a year and a half out.
Well, we're certainly hoping it ends sooner than that.
Well, I, I understand. I'm just, okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, number six.
Okay, um, yes, I had a question. This is the Title VI program, uh, to ensure, um, to protect people from discrimination based on race, color, and national origin. And on, uh, page two of the report, it says, "The purpose of the title, of the city's Title VI program," and I'm looking at bullet point C, "is to ensure the meaningful access to transit-related programs and activities by persons with limited English proficiency." So I know that I've seen the brochures in Spanish. I love that you have the bus schedules in Spanish. Um, is that, uh, done online on the website as well? And I know that there was a point in time where we were going to be able to buy bus passes online. Is that accessible in, in other languages? Because our second most spoken language in California is Spanish, and behind that is Tagalog, so I want to make sure it is, we are complying with this federal regulation and we are providing that accessibility.
I'll start, and then also, before I answer that, we have our consultant, um, Kathy Chambers from Moren Associates, who worked on, um, the update here. So to answer your question, we have, they're able to buy their bus passes, um, via at City Hall, various locations, or at a transit maintenance facility. We don't have the technology as of yet to do it online. Um, there, we have the mobile ticketing app that I think we talked about maybe a year ago. It's been in place in March of 2020. Um, but we are working, we just revised our website, so I think that's the next step of being able to add our bus stops, um, buy our bus passes to purchase them online. Um, as far as any outreach or our pamphlets, um, we have them in Spanish, we have our, um, writer's guide, we have our schedules, and we also updated, um, various topics on our website, like customer comment cards are also in Spanish. And then Kathy, you want to add anything else that we've updated since the update, but those are kind of a quick snapshot of what we've done?
No, I think you've, uh, pretty much hit everything. Um, we did find that Spanish was the language that needed to be, um, addressed, and the city is doing that. Um, it is the one that met, met the criteria both in terms of population as well as in terms of interactions with the transit program. Um, so Spanish was the only language that was identified for that. Um, and so the city is in compliance in doing what it is currently doing.
And I will note that our, with our new website, our entire website is, um, can translate into multiple languages.
Yeah, I was going to ask that, because it's not hard to add a Google Translate button.
No, it's, it's all, yeah.
That's not always 100% accurate, because, trust me, I've seen those translations. They're not, they're not always great, but it's better than nothing, so we do have, they have the ability to translate city website to Tagalog or to Arabic or to, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we've made like every effort to, as time goes on, we're adding more and more, um, as far as like newsletters, um, welcome letters to our new writers. Um, like I said, we just updated our ADA DelRide Users Guide, and anytime we also put out rider alerts, like service changes, things of that nature, we make sure that they're also in Spanish as well, English.
Okay, and you mentioned ADA, so for, because I know we have, um, you know, Latino residents that are, that are, that are deaf, that are blind, and so is that provided in, you know, in, in a way that they could access it as well?
We have only Spanish on there. Kathy, you want to interject on the other portions of that?
Um, sometimes, uh, as far as interpretation, that is something that can be requested, uh, for someone who, um, requires sign language or, um, things of that nature. Uh, so some of that is not necessarily done, um, in advance, uh, but it can be done for meetings and projects and things of that nature. Um, so.
And what number would they call or who would they contact for that, Kathy?
We have a third party, um, and I'm not sure the exact name of the company, but we have a third party if we do receive a call. Um, I'm not sure exactly what the name number is, but we do, where they can transfer them, and then they translate to our reservation, our customer service center, um, where they can easily, um, we can give them the information or vice versa if they wanted to book a trip, for that example. Um, but I'm not sure the exact.
Yeah, we, we contract, the city contracts with the service to do all our translation. If we get phone calls, um, we're able to, uh, to conference in the translation service, and they, um, they do the, uh, all interpreting for us. So we're, it's, it's real-time, um, uh, translation services.
For Spanish translation, we probably have at least four though on staff, um, that can easily take a phone call though, and, um, so that's, rather than having to call the service, we'd have quite a few people in the office to do that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Could I ask a couple of questions on this topic as well? Thank you, Mayor. Um, I understand, uh, very interesting report, and I understand that Spanish qualifies as the only safe harbor language, um, and so I understand why that. My question, though, page 16, it talks about, um, well, it talks about all the things that are translated currently in Spanish, but it says that complaint forms right now are only in English, and you acknowledge that in the report, and that it's, that translation assistance is part of the language Assistance Plan in Section 8, and my understanding is some of that, like the complaint forms, et cetera, are in the process of being translated or offered, translated. Is that accurate?
We have updated our customer feedback, um, card, so if you go on our website now, you click on the link, you'll be able to see English and Spanish currently. Um, there are other forms, um, that we do not have in Spanish that we're converting, but our customer feedback form, um, was probably updated right at the time we just, um, updated our website, so.
And I understand, too, that we've never had a Title VI, uh, we've never had a complaint, at, at least.
That's correct.
Which is, which is, which is very commendable, and I want to make that very clear. So maybe there's not a need for that complaint form yet, but I just wanted to be, which is, was, want to understand the time, timeframe, okay?
Yes, we haven't had any Title VI complaints.
I got it. I appreciate that, but of course, we want it available if, if we're ever, yeah. My, another question, as, and maybe this is, I'm not sure who, it mentioned, um, page 31, that, uh, transit staff will begin attending COA or Council on Aging meetings to better inform coordinate. Is that, what, where do you see that? Is that your, whose role is that going to be and what do you see being offered as part of that discussion?
That's our Transit Operations Manager, and he attends, um, most of the meetings, and he was just.
Has he been attending?
He's at the, not this one, but the one before.
Okay.
So when we have updates, he'll go, um, but nine times out of 10, he'll go for the first part of the meeting. He'll talk to Angel Sierra, see if there's any topics that need to be addressed. Um, but I know he was just recently there. I'm not sure if it was the last meeting or the meeting before. Um, but he's not there for the whole meeting, but he is.
And that's fine, and I'm just trying to understand the intent of that, of his attending is then to offer.
Yes, his intent is what, two-fold, sorry, yeah.
No, go ahead, give me the two-fold.
Yeah, his intent is two-fold. One is to give any updates that we have, for example, um, if it's a fair change, um, or if any updates, like on our DelRide Users Guide, but also he will attend just for any public comment, if he hears anything. Um, if we are not able to make it, um, then we make sure we communicate with Angel Sierra, so that, um, if there is a comment, maybe we're not there, um, that we're aware of it, but, uh, we make every effort to make sure that we attend.
Very good.
They were on Zoom, like, initially, right beginning in the first couple of years, but I don't know when they went back live.
They're, they're live now, yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, ready for a motion?
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
On what?
On, on this item.
On the item number six?
Yes.
Okay, on this, that'd be the last question.
Okay, well, the, you mentioned the complaint forms haven't, aren't in Spanish and that everything's on the website, and the truth is that a lot of older generation, you know, they, and me, myself, uh, and I consider myself older, um, I like the handwritten, you know, forms, so do you have a timeline of when those written forms will be translated to Spanish?
We could probably get that done easily, probably in the next 90 days or so. Right now, there is, though, a customer feedback form that is online, that is available, in Spanish and English. You just click on the link. You can print it and then fill it out, and then I believe it's a fax number on there.
And that involves a computer and a printer, and I mean, just a lot of extra steps. I, I understand it's online, but I, I'm also telling you that there's a lot of people that prefer to do, you know, they prefer the tactile, you know, write it on a card, um, so that's why I asked for a timeline.
And we have those on our, uh, vehicles, um, next to our bus schedules, so if you're riding the vehicle, you can get the, but if you're at home, you can, they can call us and then we can easily mail it to them, or, and to be quite honest, when they call in, if they want to make a complaint, uh, we take that off for them and we enter it into our system, so they won't even have to write. If they need to, they could just make a phone call, and it's inserted into our database, and then it's investigated.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion?
She may.
I move that we approve consent items one through nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Okay, uh, we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, July 7, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting, um, and we approved, uh, several, several items, uh, including, um, extending some contracts, adopting resolutions, uh, uh, for meeting via teleconference, especially with COVID numbers going back up, uh, approving the Energy Risk Management Policy Amendments, approving a resolution, uh, for the selection of California Community Choice Financing Authority, Joint Powers Authority, the bond issuer, uh, approving selection of Goldman Sachs as a prepaid supplier for potential energy prepayment financing. Uh, in addition to that, we had to modify, uh, three of our, and amend three of our long-term power purchase agreements uh, due to supply chain issues and, um, that, that they're having from abroad, and this is something that I'd, I'd like to, for us to consider as a city council, is that whatever contracts that we have, um, I would hate for us to be in a position where we might, um, face liability, uh, due to, uh, supply chain issues, so I'd like, whatever future contracts we have, to make sure that that language is included in there. Um, this is for the city manager and the city attorney, um, because I, I don't want supply chain issues to be a reason why things are delayed or costs are increased. Uh, if it's additional services, that's fine, but if it's something that could have been foreseeable, that they didn't foresee, I would hate for taxpayers to have to pay for that, and that's why I'm bringing that issue up. Um, and so that, that was my staff report from Clean Power Alliance. Um, on, on Monday, July 11, I went to Waste Management. I wore two hats, uh, to meet with the Girl Scouts, several Girl Scouts, who would like to do their Gold Award projects. And, uh, for those of you that are Boy Scouts, those of you who are Girl Scouts, in case you didn't know, I'm still very active with both. Um, and you're looking for a Gold Award project, or a Bronze Award, or a Silver Award, or an Eagle Scout project, please reach out to Waste Management. Um, they have lots of projects from, uh, trail cleanups to gardens, and I always get people who are coming to me and asking, where can I do projects? Also, RSRPD, our, um, Parks and Rec District is always, always looking for, uh, Eagle Scout projects and Bronze Award and Silver Torch projects, so, uh, please reach out. Um, if not, if you don't know who else to reach out to on City Council, you can reach out to me. I'm happy to provide that. I know we have a lot of seniors that are looking for those kinds of projects, so, um, please reach out to Waste Management. They have lots of stuff, um, for you to work on. On, um, sorry, on Wednesday, July 20, um, I met, uh, I attended the Confronting Boeing's Lies presentation by the Physicians for Social Responsibility, along with Parents versus Santa Susana Field Lab. Uh, for those who you do, for those of you who are not familiar, um, the governor entered into an agreement along with Department of Toxic Substance Control, which is basically going to allow Boeing, NASA, and Department of Energy to leave 95% of the radioactive contamination at Santa Susana Field Lab, along with zero cleanup of the toxic chemicals there. There is a Water Board meeting on August 11 in Santa Clarita. Uh, you can attend via Zoom or in person. Please, please attend. This is our last opportunity to hold these polluters accountable and to make sure that, um, no more families here get cancer or have thyroid issues or have dental issues, which we're all familiar with. We all know someone that has issues like that. So I urge you, please, as, uh, members of the public and residents of this city, to make sure that these polluters are held accountable and to attend the Regional Water Board meeting on August 11 at Santa Clarita Valley. If you want more information, you can just, you can watch In the Dark of the Valley that Mr. Lopper mentioned, um, and, um, make sure that you advocate for our residents, our, our students, um, and, and our families. And, um, that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, a thorough report. Thank you. Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, July 2, I attended our Independence Day celebration at the Rancho Simi Valley, uh, Santa Susana, Rancho Simi, Santa Susana Park. Uh, it was a great celebration. The music was great. The fireworks were beautiful, and, uh, I think everybody there had a great time. On Thursday, July 7, I attended the SCAG Regional, uh, Transportation Committee and the Regional Council, um, via Zoom. It was, uh, the meetings were pretty brief, which are our last meeting until September, and we just, wasn't too much discussed that has anything to do with Simi Valley. On Friday, July 8, I attended the VCTC meeting of Ventura, the Ventura County Transportation Committee, you know, in Camarillo, and we did not meet about any, I did have a chance to speak with the Caltrans rep for our area, talking about sound walls on the 118 freeway. It's a new rep, because the old rep was made the Chief of Caltrans for the State of California. Congratulations to Tony. She was very receptive to my, my request, and, uh, we're going to talk more about it in the future. Hopefully, we'll be able to find a way to come up with some funding for that. Mostly, we're missing our sound walls, the most important ones, to me anyways, and probably to the residents in that area, are the ones between Sycamore and Arringer on the 118 freeway on the south side. We have them on the north side, but for some reason, they didn't put them on the south side, so the sound just bounces off. On Monday, July 11, I have to wish my wife happy birthday again. On July 18, I have to wish my father-in-law happy birthday. On, uh, July 20, alluding to what was spoken earlier, I did pull paperwork to run for reelection to the City Council. And, um, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Calvino.
Thank you, and we can wish you a happy birthday, too. All right, um, on June 28, uh, right after our last meeting, I had the pleasure of attending the, um, Evening Rotary Club, where they gave out all of their, uh, awards and their donations to all of our nonprofits. So there were, I think, eight or 10 different nonprofits, um, including, um, the Free Clinic, the Girl Scout Troop. I mean, it went from one extreme to the other. It was really nice to see all those people, uh, be there to celebrate and to say thank you, and for that club to give out those awards. On Thursday, June 30, I attended the Rotary Demotion for my Rotary Club. If you're familiar with Rotary, we, when you become president, you don't get celebrated, but when you are done, we demote you. And so it's usually like a roast of some time or, or a joke, so we, we, uh, beheaded the Queen at our demotion, so her nickname was the Queen, so it was a beheading. It was done very well, and Mr. Rhodes made a great, uh, jester, so. Um, uh, Saturday, July 2, I also attended our, our fireworks show. It was great. Justin Han Singer was awesome, as well as all the other bands that were participating. And then on the 3rd, I cheated and went to Moore Parks, too. So, because I, my nephew from the Army was here visiting, and, um, they came on that day, so we were able to go and, and celebrate there. Our fireworks were better, but I'm, I'm not going to say that out loud, so, but it, but it really, it was a nice weekend. But, but Moore Park does a good job, too. On Wednesday, July 6, I had a EDC Executive Committee meeting. We meet once a month for the, the executive meeting, and then we meet once a month for the full board, so that's why I mentioned EDC quite a bit, I, two meetings a month. And there's just so much going on there, and I just, I can't say it enough, for any of our businesses to go to edcollaborative.com. There are free webinars on, um, anything from bookkeeping to international trade, and it's all free. And there, we also do lending. If you can't qualify for a, for a loan from a, a regular financial institution, you can apply for a loan with the EDC at very reasonable rates. They have everything in Spanish. They also have a couple of other languages, I believe, available, but every month, there's something, or even more often, their website has new stuff going on. I try and post some of it on my Facebook page, but even I don't keep up with it, but I just want to reiterate that to everybody, it's free. Um, tell your friends, tell your family, anyone that has a small business, or is even thinking about starting a small business, they'll help you with that. So it's great. They have, um, we have like 60 advisors on staff for, uh, with all expertise in different areas, and so they will pair you with somebody, um, with the expertise that you're looking for. So it's wonderful, edcollaborative.com. So it's wonderful. edcollaborative.com. On July, or Saturday, July 9th, oh, this was wonderful. I attended the 911 emergencies and the 805 meeting in Thousand Oaks. Assemblymember Jackie Irwin, and in conjunction with some county and such, put on a program regarding our water shortage. And they had a lot of different displays there. It was very interesting. The panel was made up of, of water agency people, as well as a lady from the state who's an expert in different types of water reclamation. And I mean, it was, they had a panel of, we even had a fire, one of the fire chiefs there, you know, representing the fire department. But it was very informative. I think it was very well attended. I saw other people there, too. But they did a great job in answering questions and talking about it and showing, showing you in PowerPoints exactly why things were happening the way they were. It was very interesting. And then outside there, they had a lot of displays. There was a couple of plants where they were giving away drought-resistant plants and, and ones that are better for your yard, ones that are better for butterflies. And then, of course, we had our wonderful fire department there, you know, as well as the hospital was there, the hospital in the other county, and the other city was there, that type of thing. But it was a great program. And it was all free. And I think it was very well attended and very much appreciated. I tried to get them to do it here again, but they just slowly, they didn't have quite the time to book another one. So on Thursday, July 14th, I unfortunately had to attend a funeral for Sherri Schultz. Sherri was a longtime Simi Valley resident and was kind of the spark in almost any event you went to in town. She, if she wasn't leading it, she was behind it, pushing whoever was leading it. I'll let Mike also make comments because he knows her well, too. But it was just, it was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony in remembrance of, up at Mount Sinai. And the family's very appreciative of all the support that they have received. And can you tell we were, we had no meetings for a month? That's why we all have so much. Again, on Thursday, July 21st, I had my regular EDC Board meeting. Again, edcollaborative.com. I'm going to keep saying that to everybody. My last thing I just wanted to mention is I also, as a member of the City of Simi Valley Council, I sit as a Commissioner on the Ventura County Animal Shelter. And it is kitten season, has been kitten season. If you need kittens or, if you need a kitten or kittens, please go to vcas.us. They have tons of them there. They also have programs on there on what to do with our community cats, which is what they're called. We do TNR, Trap, Neuter, and Return. So we have a lot of community cats. If you have stray cats in your area, let's get them neutered. It's free of cost. Then, at the same time, I just posted, and I was trying to find it on my phone. And I can't find it right now. There is going to be a $10 Spain neuter clinic coming up. It's on my Facebook webpage, or Facebook webpage, Facebook page. I know I posted it there, but I was trying to find it on vcas.us. You can probably find it there, too. $10 Spain neuter. So you can't beat that. And that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Elaine Blitzer.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a fun month for me as well. I will say that I appreciated meeting with Brian just before he left town. And on Thursday, June 30th, I think I have his last appointment. But I appreciated the update of what, of some of the issues that we've been discussing. I, too, attended the wonderful fireworks extravaganza that was here in Simi Valley. And thank you to the Kiwanis who, who puts much time and effort into, Kathy's even here. Thank you for, for making that such a success. That was lovely. In fact, I was, appreciated that I was asked to volunteer, so I sold tickets, I think at the Beer Garden for a while. And that was a, anyway, a fun experience to, just to be in the middle, think of things. And I came, came to appreciate just how many volunteers that you need to make this successful. And it's, thank you for all those who did put in so much time. It really was lovely. And the fireworks were wonderful. And unlike DeeDee, who saw Moore Parks on July 3rd, I saw Thousand Oaks on July 4th. You know, if you, if you time it right, you can get a good, a good weekend of fireworks in. But I just happened to be there with my granddaughter and visiting a daughter and wondered what all the hubbub was about, is the cars were parking in parking lots there by the, and I realized that's where they go to watch their fireworks. They sit in their cars and watch it at the shopping center. So anyway, it was fun. But again, Simi was certainly outstanding.
Can I interrupt you for one question?
Yes.
Were you able to blow out all the fireworks to celebrate your birthday?
I want you to know that I did not let a single firework off. I didn't, I just, but I got to enjoy other legal fireworks. And I want you to know, too, I was offered a sparkler by someone a few weeks ago, and I did not take it. I just want, it was hard. I want you to know I was, but thank you.
It's a long time.
My birthday is the 4th of July, Independence Day, which is what he's referring to, which is why he's asking. So I have been accused of being a proponent of fireworks in this community because of that. But anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, July 7th, I attended the Energy and Environment SCAG's Regional Committee meeting. And they had several interesting presentations. The one that I found particularly informative was presented, was given by the Orange County Water District. And they educated us about their groundwater basin program. Not that it applies specifically, but they talked about just what it took to make, to get that water source available. And now it feeds 19 municipalities and 2.5 million customers, et cetera. And so it just reminded me that we need to be doing, really doing some advanced planning. It takes years and years to solve some of our immediate water issues. And anyway, it was interesting to see how, and they have become an example. And people come in to see how they've done it. And so I would, I'm sure that we have, in our water district as well, people who've been privy to that. But I would love maybe that some time spent there, talking to how they were successful tapping their groundwater. But that's a whole nother topic. That weekend, I will tell you, I was out of, gone up to Idaho to celebrate my parents' 60th wedding anniversary. So on, on July 13th, 60 years. But we celebrated the weekend. I came back, actually, that, on July 13th, I attended the Interfaith meeting here in the community. And I appreciate the many, our faith community and the many wonderful projects they're doing. And one of the discussions that was had, too, was the, some of the food pantry efforts. And in fact, I think we have someone here who we represent, who, who is very involved with Stillwater. Is that, is that right? But anyway, there, I recognize that there's lots of, lots of good being done in our community. And it was good to attend. One of the things, and Brian, you can correct me. I, I did mention that the city with some of what we've decided with our CARES funding.
ARPA money.
ARPA. Why do I get my acronyms off with our ARPA money? I'm sorry. I've got to use my acronyms correctly. I know that we are, we have earmarked funds to be used in some of those areas for capital purchases. I want to be sure I was, well, we were specifically negotiating with certain bodies, but.
We have, we have funding available, we have set aside funding available for food pantries. We're talking with different ones, but it is not all spoken for. So we're happy to have a conversation.
And I wanted you to say that, Brian, because I did make this statement. If someone needed a freezer or something, they should come talk to the city possibly. So that, I wanted to be sure I wasn't misspeaking and I, and so, and it's the ARPA funding. Thank you.
That's correct.
So that was, that was July 13th, Interfaith meeting. On July 14th, I attended VCOG's Board Meeting, Ventura County Association of Government, Council of Government, Council of Government, which was held in Camarillo. It was very interesting because the, the major topic was actually an economic presentation made by Dr. Mark Scheip, who, Schneep? Schneep? I'm glad you got Schneep. Thank you. No, I knew I was going to butcher that name, so thank you. He is the Director of Economic Forecast in Santa Barbara. Some of the comments, he spoke very much as far as what's happening in our, in our country. It was very, it was, but he did, a few things that I wanted to take away from it. Of course, we're aware of what's going on with, with inflation rates, et cetera. And there was a discussion of whether we are in a recession or not. One of the things that he pointed out, which is accurate, is that it's not your traditional recession, per se, because we are at full employment. And that, and that is not always, recession, often that's, there's a shrinking and people looking for work, et cetera. But one of the things that I found particularly interesting is that he cited a study that said consumer confidence or satisfaction was at a 50-year low, which I thought was really, and I, and I wanted him to get more into what is causing that. And I have, he gave the, you know, theories as far as, you know, prices and, and on commodities and a variety of things, which certainly are part of it. But it was interesting discussion that, that puts us at a kind of a unique crossroads right now in, in where we go forward. He did, he did comment of certainly applying to Ventura County. We are, in essence, kind of at a, our, our growth, population growth, economic growth, et cetera, is kind of flat and has been for many years. A lot of that, he attributes to sores and that there isn't a lot of geographical space for, for population to grow. And so that is, that is something that, that our, our county has made, has decided. And so that will affect what we can do. And so you have a lot of infill, but you don't have a lot of growth. And so that will certainly affects our, our own city's economic growth and development, although we have some positive things happening. But it was a very interesting report that was, that we heard. A couple other things, and then I'll turn it to the mayor. I, on July 21st, I also attended, I'm on the Administrative Committee for VCOG as well as, and so they, part of what they discussed was REAP funding, which we discussed a little bit earlier this evening, how we're using REAP funding for some of our housing element. But REAP 2.0 is, is now coming, and coming forward. And guidelines are still being established of how people can apply for funds. On a regional level, there was some thought that it wasn't going to be specifically available for regional organizations such as VCOG, but more specific for local cities, et cetera. That has since been changed. So VCOG is looking at ways that they can access those funds. But I'm, I'm sure that our, we as a city are looking very carefully at many ways that we can access those funds for our own planning, for our own planning purposes. And yes, I did go back to Idaho that weekend. Just got back because I drove my son up, who will be attending BYU Idaho University, and had to move him in. So I made two trips this week, this, this month up there. But anyway, it's been, it's good to be back and with us today. And so thank you. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. I also took advantage of the break and traveled. And so I should be short, but my break got pretty exciting. First of all, on July 2nd, thank you, Mike Judge. I, I was going crazy trying to figure out how did our fireworks show go. And I called Mike, got a great report. And then later on, talked to some other folks that relayed what a good show it was, what a good program it was, and what a great job the Kiwanis did in establishing our celebration. So thank you, Kiwanis. On Saturday, July 9th, one of the big disappointments, not being able to go to the Stars and Stripes Ice Cream Social. The, and that, the staff over there and the volunteers do such a wonderful job. Great place. So we celebrated it by my youngest daughter deciding that was the day to have a baby. So I now have a new grandson. But not to be outdone, not to be outdone, the following day, my wife's father passed away to just keep everything going and exciting. I, I do want to mention Sherri Schultz, what a doer. That, you know, a lot of people talk about doing a lot of work. And then there's a lot of people that don't talk, and they just do a lot of work. And Sherri was so special in this community. And I just want to relay one little tiny story. She came up to me. I hadn't bought my ticket yet to the Boys and Girls Club annual event. And so she came up to me and I was like, uh-oh, she's going to tell me I have to buy a ticket. And so she told me I had to buy a ticket, and I'm oohing and ahhing, trying to figure out how to get out of it. She goes, I'll tell you what, Keith, you buy a ticket and you can sit at my table. She always had a hook. She always had a hook. And, and she was exceptional and will definitely be missed. I think that's pretty much it. The rest of the time, I spent going, picking up my grandson in the Dallas area. So I left Simi Valley in a heat wave, and I went to Dallas in a heat wave. And then I really got sharp. We loaded him up and flew to Florida to play Little League Baseball. And then I found out what heat really was. That was incredible. So it's really odd when you come back to Simi Valley, which I did two, three days ago, and you go, this is great. It's so cool. It was amazing. It felt like a snowstorm. So anyway, that's my report. And I had a good time, and it all worked out. With that, we'll move on to 10B.
Mayor, I have two requests.
Sure.
The first one, and I'm not, I'm not sure if we've done this in the past, but I would like for August 26th to be recognized as Women's Equality Day. That's the day of the year when women's salary finally catches up.
We did that last year.
Can we do it again this year? Thank you. And my.
So we won't put it on the agenda since it's already there?
Yeah. I just want, I couldn't remember when, we did it last year. My second request is, there were a lot of people, and I have screenshots, and who were very upset about the way the fireworks enforcement worked. I know that we had discussed this, but, you know, I, I myself had to go and find out exactly the exact address of who was, who was shooting off the fireworks and take video and provide evidence. And, you know, the way that it was done this year, it just, it didn't function. And there were a lot of people that were very upset. There were a couple of fires, just to my knowledge, in Big Sky that were started because of fireworks. And the Ventura County Fire had to respond. So I would like us to revisit the issue of fireworks to find a, a better way to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe, including our veterans, our students with special needs, our, I saw veterans tweeting about how traumatic it was to them to have the fireworks. So we, we have to come up with a better system. So I would like to find out a, a public report from the police chief on what happened, what worked, what didn't work, and how we can make things better for next year.
Okay.
And I know he's already written the report, so it would just be a matter of presenting it to the public.
I was just going to ask.
It's not extra work for him, because he already did it. Yeah.
By the way, thank you to the Police Department. That's a, a great report. Helped a lot. And then, does anybody want a second to discuss on the fireworks in the future? Agendaizing.
I'd like to wait until after we hear the chief's report and what, what, if any other recommendations they might have, utilizing what happened this year to improve for next year.
Well, he already emailed us the report. I would like the public to see that report. I think, and as public servants, we should share that information, not keep it exclusively to ourselves, but share it with the public.
Will be, if it's not already available to the public.
How so?
That, I would have to talk to staff and find out how the, the most effective way to distribute. We could put it online. I don't, I don't have that answer. But I certainly have, yes, we're transparent, and yes, the public deserves access to the report.
Can, can we get a timeline of when that might be available?
Yeah, we can, let us put together, for lack of a better term, an after-action report. We can put it on our website. We can tweet, we can let social media know that it's available and give a link to the information that's, that's in the chief's report. So. And I would say, chief is out right now. What are we at? Give us, give us a couple of weeks.
And then I would assume the public would, once they read it, they're welcome to come and give public comment.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, and if it, if it shows the need, I'll second and we'll bring it up.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else?
I have one, I'm sorry, Mayor. One more request. I know we had a public comment here earlier with regard to water restrictions. And I've had a lot of people ask me and email me and talk to me and post on Nextdoor about enforcement of water restrictions. I know Mr. Banforth mentioned if we all work as a community and not think as individuals, what a wonderful community this will be. And that seems to be true for water restrictions. Are we going to enforce water restrictions? Are we not going to enforce water restrictions? There are people that are thinking as a community, and there are some who are not.
I think it's best, I mean, I know a little bit about it, but I think it's best the city manager address that question.
Yeah, so we are currently enforcing, we sent out 200 notices last week alone to violators that we were, we became aware of, that we have evidence of them violating the water restrictions. We're getting lots of phone calls and emails. But I believe we're coming back to the City Council at the next meeting with an update on water restrictions. council at the next meeting with an update on water restrictions, because there are changes afoot at the state level in terms of irrigation and things of that nature. So, that's, that's going to be a topic of discussion, I believe, at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Once again, we, we had a little break here, which meant we didn't have a lot of meetings, but now we have a lot of people to recognize here, in memory of. And I'll start with my father-in-law, Don Breimer, and then, of course, Sherri Schultz. Again, I think anybody here knows the quality of Lady Sherri was, and the love she had for this city, and all the good deeds that she's done for this city. So, we wish her rest in peace, and don't be too hard on them up there, Sherri. She's going to be doing a lot of organizing, I have a feeling. Also, we want to recognize the victims of the tragedy in High Park, Illinois, and along with Abi Shinzo, the prime minister, the former prime minister of Japan. All, we wish them the best, and send our condolences, and staff will prepare letters from the council and forward those. I have a question. I'm sorry I didn't ask it during my report, but I had requested of staff to find out what the status of the potential, potential investigation out of what came out of Waste Management's report on what they thought another trash hauling company, Athens, had done some wrongdoing. And it seems like it's been a long time, and we can't, and the only reason I'm pushing for this, if in fact, the items that Waste Management claimed happened, we are, we, the city of Simi Valley and everybody that lives here, are victims. And so, I think it deserves an investigation to find out if in fact, those allegations are accurate, or if they're not accurate. So, I ask you, Mr. City Attorney, what have you been able to discover?
I have been in touch with CalRecycle, and I've spoken to an attorney, a managing attorney there, and he assured me last week that they are, that there are investigators looking into the material and the items that they have obtained, and that he asked me to follow up in about a week or two.
Okay, so, a future council meeting, we'll hear from you on that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Mayor, I did, at my meeting with Waste Management, they did, they did discuss that, and they, they are, they were going to do a public, a press release with regard to some of the things that is going on with, with the other trash hauling, and they showed me the, the different weights and things like that, so. I know, I know that they, they are gathering their evidence as well.
Okay. I was going to ask you when you...
And I'm sorry, I didn't cut out my report.
No, that's fine, but this is, I think, important, too. You have a contact person there for, you, you mentioned the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and for whatever reason, I, I get a lot of calls that come to the Code of Honors and...
Yes, I'm happy to share the contact, yes.
Okay, so, we can point them in your...
If, if, worse comes to worse, just go, go to Justin Hansiger, and he'll send you to whoever it is, because it depends on which project they're going to work on. But yeah, just send them through Justin, and he'll, he'll direct them the right way.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? We did a good job tonight, and we got out of here early, or we're getting out of here. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. Have a good night, and meetings adjourned.